I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position and also please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston U2. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will not come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Alva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings you've given us freely. Father, we thank you that we can know you and serve you. We thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy most of all. I do pray for this mayor administration and city as a whole. I pray that you give us wisdom and guidance to know your will and the ability to follow it, never resist you in any way. I pray that we always bring you honor and glory with all that we say, do, and think, and give you the thanks in advance for all that you will do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have an update from the EMA. Mr. Josh. And before you get started, so that we can make sure that we're in compliance, according to the governor's safer-at-home ordinance, as long as we're social distance at six feet and have a mask, then we can have...
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yes, that is correct. And we've seen more and more over the past several weeks of larger gatherings coming back in using the same provisions. It, you know, it's good news for a change, and so I'm kind of excited to share this morning's report with you. Director Gaitor sends her regrets that she couldn't be here this morning to deliver this in person, but she, along with Breonna Cole and Kip Williams, have deployed to Baldwin County at their request to assist with recovery from Hurricane Sally. They have a really large handful going on down there and need some help. So there are several EMA agencies in the state that have already sent personnel down, and our three left this morning to go down. So I'm sure that they would appreciate your thoughts and prayers, as well as those that were affected by the hurricane. So our COVID update this morning, the total number of cases countywide stands at 3,011. We got an additional 373 cases that are probable. In total, we've experienced 44 fatalities directly attributed to COVID in Etowah County. Now, let me temper this next number with a couple of caveats. Since we've been in this pandemic for months and months now, there are a lot of people who test positive but never show any signs or symptoms. They're asymptomatic. And so they don't know that they're infecting other people. So that's one caveat. And then the second one is that if people live in a home together, one person is diagnosed as having COVID, being COVID positive, there's no need for them, when they present with the same signs and symptoms, to take away a test from somebody who may have never had a test or been exposed to the symptoms. So physicians, along with the CDC, public health are saying now to try to conserve some of the testing supplies is if you live in a home with somebody who tests positive and you present with those symptoms, you are presumptively considered positive. That's where a lot of those probable numbers come from. So keeping those two things in mind, our number of positive tests in Etowah County have decreased by 12.14%, and we're averaging about 166 tests over a week. So both of these numbers can be, but don't necessarily have to be, attributed to a falling trend. It could be that they just are an anomaly, but we are hopeful that this is indicative that we have in fact begun the decline from that steady rise that we've experienced. Some more good news, our 14-day positive result has dropped approximately 8.43% and 202 people have been added within the last seven days, correction, the last 14 days. So that is a decrease. Again, that goes back to attribute, hopefully, with that trend. Demographics, the two largest demographics of diagnosis have remained constant throughout. 38.48% is in the 25 to 49 age bracket, and then 30, correction, 20.19% are those that fall between 50 and 64. African-Americans account for 25% of those diagnosed, and the white population accounts for approximately 33.7%. Overall fatalities, again, looking at the demographics, have remained, unfortunately, constant as well. 77 of those, 77% of those who have passed away from COVID have been greater than age 65. So, you know, we've still got to be stressing to our adult population, our senior adult population, how important it is to be vigilant in making sure that they are taking the precautions that are necessary to protect themselves. And then the second largest fatality group is those between 50 and 64. That's at 17.8%. Both of those groups, basically from 50 to greater than age 65, are the ones that usually have additional health problems. So it's not necessarily that COVID was the primary cause. It may have just exacerbated another condition that they have. The EMA is still encouraging and assisting public health with testing, although we now have shifted more to a mitigation and recovery mode for COVID vaccine distribution once that has been undertaken. The trailer that is going to be prepared for use at vaccine clinics, as well as testing clinics, is currently being built. It will be something that we can provide an immediate response to as soon as either a hotspot is identified and we need to test in a particular area of the community, or if the vaccine becomes available and citizens want to take advantage of that. We do know, the one thing we do know about any vaccine, it's going to require cold storage. So we've already begun to work through those policies and procedures to make sure we've got that handled. We're still waiting on a few pieces of equipment and supplies to have the Ambu bus ready. You'll remember that's the school bus that was donated by the Etowah County Board of Education for us to convert into an Ambu bus that we can use to transport folks or provide vaccine administration. It could be, it very well be used in a mass casualty situation. We hope we never have to use it, but it's another tool in our toolbox. And then lastly, the Department of Public Health is going to be doing their annual seasonal flu shot clinic on April the 2nd. It will be held at North Glencoe Baptist Church from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. This is the same clinic that the EMA has participated with, I believe, ever since they started doing the clinics a number of years ago. There's no charge for Medicare, Medicaid, Blue Cross, Blue Shield. If you don't have one of those insurances or you are uninsured, they're $15. However, nobody will be turned away just because they don't have the $15. That won't preclude those who may not have insurance, or they may not have a home address, they may not have a phone number. Their goal is to try to get everybody vaccinated for the seasonal flu, because quite frankly, most everybody in the healthcare community is not really sure what to expect with this seasonal flu this year in the middle of a pandemic. So if you've got any questions on the flu shot clinic, here's the number for the health department, it's 256-547-6311. And you can go ahead and ask any questions that you have. Is there anything I can answer for the council?
The date of this, October the 2nd?
Yes, sir. October the 2nd. I believe that is a Friday, Councilman Cannon, if I'm not mistaken. I believe it's a Friday.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we still in the red since our numbers are going down here in the county?
We actually have dropped back down into less than the high-risk category. We have been doing, as a community, a lot of things right, but we've also been kind of complacent. And in our line of work in emergency management, our biggest challenge or our biggest threat is complacency. People get comfortable, they think numbers are going down, and then, you know, before you know it, you've got 20 people sitting in a living room, you know, no masks, no social distance, no nothing. So we're encouraging folks, while they have in fact reduced the countywide risk, the risk is still there. So we want to, especially in our senior population, underscore the importance of taking those precautions.
I know the Halloween's coming up. Do you have any precautions for Halloween, or what the people should do, or anything like that?
I know that in the past, we as an agency have participated in the first responders trunk treat that they have right across the street in the amphitheater parking lot. I have not heard anything specific on that, but I do know that part of our staff is in process now, beginning a social media campaign, dealing with the precautions and steps to take if you want to go out and trick or treat. You know, the one thing that we've seen as a trend so far, since school has gotten back in session, for the most part, folks are adhering to the, to do the smart things that they should be doing. And we're hopeful that Halloween will be no different. You know, we want to make sure that the children still get to go and be children, but at the same time, we have to temper that with making sure that everybody's safe.
Well, just, I think that the positive outturn is, or the positive turn is definitely relative to good decisions at the strategic level, good strategy, and then good decisions for a lot of people at the personal level.
Yes, ma'am.
So again, we sometimes jump at the opportunity to be critical, but I think it, you know, people should be applauded for the good things that they're doing. And I do want to applaud you. It's a very good report today. It's obvious that you have a very good grasp of the data, and you did a great job explaining it, so I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Y'all have a good day.
All right. Thank you. We will continue with our agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting held on September 15th.
Some move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of September the 11th through the 17th.
Some move. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation. I've finished business. We have an ordinance that's adopting our fiscal year 2021 budget, and this ordinance was presented last week for the first reading and approves the following budget. General Fund, $51,405,295,000. Special Revenue Fund, $9,142,961. Dead Service Fund, $7,319,818,000. Enterprise and Internal Service Fund, $12,577,857,000. Capital Fund Project, $7,600,000. Capital Fund Project Number Two, $6,661,400. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Some move.
Second.
Clerk, I call for a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Worthy?
Yes.
Back?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
And Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Our next item, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance rezoning property located at 1036, 1038, and 1042 Springfield Avenue from R1, one-family residence, to an R2 multifamily district. Kevin D. Ferguson II, doing business as KDF and Company LLC, has requested the rezoning in order to meet bank requirements for financing needed to make improvements to the property. The commission, the planning commission recommends the council approve the rezoning. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this ordinance? If you'll come to the mic and give your name and address, please.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Vanita Macon. My address is 1033 Springfield Avenue. I am Vanita Macon. I am here again to oppose the rezoning of the property located at 1036, 1038, 1042 Springfield Avenue from R1, one-family residence, to an R2 multifamily district. Kevin D. Ferguson II, doing business as KDF and Company LLC, has requested the rezoning in order to meet bank requirements for financing needed to make improvements to the property. The commission, the planning commission recommends the council approve the rezoning. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this ordinance? If you'll come to the mic and give your name and address, please.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Vanita Macon. My address is 1033 Springfield Avenue. I am Vanita Macon. I am here again to oppose the rezoning of the property located at 1036, 1038, 1042 Springfield Avenue. I am one of many Green Pastors community members who stand firm with opposing rezoning the property. The zoning and planning commission has not informed the Green Pastor community of a valid reason to rezon. Neither has the newly acquired property owner, KDF and Company LLC. Green Pastors is a historical community with deep roots within the African-American culture. We refuse to give leeway for any company to rezon our community and eventually spread throughout the neighborhood over time until we are no more. We are doing everything that we know to prevent Green Pastors from disappearing, like what happened to the community that Walmart bought out years ago, right before you go over the bridge. There are buildings and homes over 50 years old that remain standing and occupied in Green Pastors. I personally don't want to see Green Pastors become an urban renewal or gentification project. Rezoning opens the door for this to happen. Council members, I am asking all of you to oppose the zoning and planning commission and KDF and Company LLC's proposal to rezon. The Green Pastors community will present to you today a petition that has over 100 signatures from residents within the community to oppose rezoning. Surrounding community members in East Gaston also support our efforts to keep our community as it is. Our community fire department, Fire Station Number Nine, even supports our efforts in what we are standing for, and we appreciate Fire Station Number Nine for signing our petition. Green Pastors have received overwhelming support from members afar, as far as social media can reach. We have, we only wish the elected District One Representative, Cynthia Toles, would support the people who elected her to be our voice. Unfortunately, Ms. Toles has elected not to be our voice. Please deny the rezoning, and thank you for your time.
I have it. Yes, ma'am. Do you need to say anything else, sir? Is there anyone else to speak in opposition?
Yes.
Okay. You give your name, and when you're doing your presentation, if you will refrain from Your name and address, please.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Celestine Macon, and I live at 1033 Springfield Avenue in East Gaston. I am here to oppose the rezoning because it will create too many problems for us in that area. And we are a needed community, and we care what goes on in our community. And I'm asking the council board members to oppose to this rezoning, the rezoning of this property. We don't want that there, and that's what I have to say about. Thank you all.
Is there anyone else to speak in opposition? Yes.
Petition. My name is Victor May. I live at 1119 Glendale Avenue. I'm here to support the Green Pastor opposing of changing the district to R1 to R2. Couple of questions I want to ask the city council. Does anybody, I'm sure everybody knows the history of Gaston, but does anybody know the history of Green Pastor? Or how, why it was created, or what it was created for? In 1930 and 40, Green Pastors was created for black people to have a place to live after they got out of service. Black people, because there was nowhere else for us to go. There were projects, but that was created for black men in the service. Now, I'm 52 years old. I watched Mr. Studdler, I watched Mr. Hutchinson, Ms. Jacobs, Mr., Ms. Helen Buckner, David Buckner's wife, Pastor Gaston, Mr. McConnell, he's a past principal, all these prominent people, Ms. Adell, Mr. Adell, Ms. Morgan, the Fears, all these men, guys who went to work every morning and given opportunities to come and work and live in Green Pastors and build a home, save for their families. If you change and allow that apartment or those multi-homes to come over, it's going to hurt that community. Everybody here today, parents of 68 years or older, they don't do the internet, they don't know what's going on. Everybody we got in the community, and they asked about, did they know what was going on? None of them knew, because they're all older people. They all done worked hard all their life to have somewhere safe to live. Now, by voting to change that, you're going to take that away from them. You're going to give opportunities for halfway houses to come in. We already got people walking up and down the street that are prostitutes, nobody doing anything about. These older people, they go to work, they worked all their life, they want to enjoy their twilight years. So if you change that, you change the way they live. You change the way they get up and go to work, they can't come outside their house. When you get older, your life, it comes to a little smaller area. It's not like when you're young, you vibrate, you go out, you can say something to older people. These young people coming in these neighborhoods that don't belong in that neighborhood, are you going to invite more people like that and make these people uncomfortable? These people that don't work 50, 60 years, most of them are good years, most of them, again, some of them are school teachers, some of them are principals. By voting against them, voting for that, you're going to hurt these people. You're going to put them in a situation where they're afraid to come out their houses. So again, I'm with them opposing what's going on, and I'm asking you to vote against it, not just because of the business part of it, because these people have worked all their life to have something, and you're going to take that history away from them, too. So when you think about it, vote, vote was right, vote was in your heart, vote if that was your grandparents, or that was your mom and dad. Think about what you're doing. Thank you.
My name is Kenneth Turner, and I live at 1030 Glendale Avenue, which is the next street over from the property in discussion. I would like to know why the property can't be replanted instead of rezoned to mother family. This way, each of the residents, in course, will sit on its own piece of property, and zoning can remain single-family. I'd like to share a story with you. I grew up in Asheville, Alabama, and I've been living at this residence since 1996. But before that, I would come to Gaston to state my grandmother, which lived behind the Antioch Baptist Church on East Broad, and the girls would play softball, and we would ride on the truck over to Green Pastors. And it was a joy to go over there because it was something that was ours, that we could, you know, enjoy ourselves during this segregation era. And my dad is 90 years old, and he lives in Asheville, and he tells me about the days when he came to Gaston, to Green Pastors, that there was nowhere else to go for black peoples to be. And he would tell me about dancing over there all night, having a good time, because they couldn't go anywhere else. And not only do I hear my dad talk about those things, I hear, you know, my father-in-law, Mr. Hubert Kendall, and a lot of other people talk about those days, when you couldn't go downtown, or a lot of places, or whatever, but you could go to Green Pastors. Now, what more could be historical than that? You know, having something of your own that nobody gave us, that the peoples of the community built themselves. So look what you're doing when you rezon this property. We know what factories and business people do when they come to our community. They have no regard for family life, and most of the time, the people that owns this, you know, property for the manufacturers, they live somewhere secluded. They don't have to come out their front or backyard to look at stuff like that. They can go out their back and have a peace of mind, and that's what we want for Green Pastors. And when I used to come to Gaston, I thought, man, pass by on that truck going to the ball game, I look at the paved streets, the nice houses, and I said, man, it must be nice to live in that community. So this is what we want for Green Pastors. And as I was a kid living in Asheville, and now I'm a resident of Green Pastors. Thank you.
Is there any other opposition? Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Carmen Gwen. I live at 1208 Springfield Avenue. I have lived there for over 50 years. I am in agreement with my neighbors, and I am in opposition of the rezoning efforts from R1 to R2. Thank you.
We'll let this be the last speaker.
My name is Daniel Macon, and I live at 1210 Springfield Avenue. I have lived there for over 50 years. I am in agreement with my neighbors, and I am in opposition of the rezoning efforts from R1 to R2.
We'll let this be the last speaker.
My name is Daniel Macon, and I live at 1210 Springfield Avenue. And I just want to say, if you want, last meeting we had about this, he said he just wanted to put air conditioning and paint the houses so he can get more money for them. But do you have to rezon to do that? So I'm just saying, we opening the floodgates for everybody to come in. we opening the floodgates for everybody to come in and build apartments, stuff like that. And I'm in opposition.
Sir, did you want to? Okay. Your name, please, and address.
My name is Curtis Mosley. I live at 1014 Glendale Avenue. I'm a resident of East Gas, practiced all of my life except two years. When I finished high school in 68, I served my country. And I came back, side of town I live on. I lived here all my life. I was there when they first put the road down Springfield. It was a dirt road. They used to grade that road. Then they used to put oil down there to keep dust from flying. Then as time passed, it got blacktop with curbing. During this time, you look at it, you think it was a swamp area. Practically, I'm not going to say it like that. But you can look at it in all this, you can tell what the people in this area look like. It look mother culture, like you're talking about a mother zoning? I don't think so. Now, the way I feel, I work hard. Tightly. I was an employee at a steel plant. And I double hard, work hard. Where can I build another house? Or add on to another house? I have a corner lot about 250 feet. Regardless of the size of it. Where can I go? I can't go north. I can't go south. East or west to build a house. Because if I go in the further, it'll be towards the Boulevard. And by the time I decide to do that, later on, they're going to come down the whole side and take all the houses close to Megan Boulevard. That mean I'll be out right there. We don't have a picture to show there. But it's a zero. Big old zero. Showing what area going to be taken. And part of my house is sitting in that area. It'll take over two of my lots, I have five lots. And my house sitting on one of them. And majority is going to be taken by this R2. And this R2, I don't want it. I'm against it. First reason, I helped mold in one over in East Gas, Green Pastor. I like my community. I like to keep it as it is. I, in a way, helped develop that area. Riverside my lot was a waterway. My well said, come down through there. I went to the, I came to the city, I told them I would like to put a pipe down where this water can go through my lot. They told, they looked at me and told me, no, you can't do that. I said, why I can't do? He said, you put a pipe down there. You just can't put one, you're going to have to do the whole, the whole lot down through there. We talking about over 150 foot of lot down there. Then they told me, it just can't be no pipe, you have to get it like I own. I said, what you talking about? They say it going to have your concrete wire reinforced pipe. You know what I'm talking about, though? It wasn't over there. Well, anyway, I went in the plant, I dove a whole year. Then turn on the job, had them call me if anybody out to come work. Those pipes, they caused some. It wasn't one pipe, it was three pipes that go all the way down the whole lot. Other word, by me doing this city grant project or whatever, they didn't need my help at all. They took my yard, put my pipes down, which I appreciate they done there. Part of, I'm upset about it. Right across at the end, cross over Springfield, they put a big old rubber pipe down across the, for the highway. Why did they let me do that? Instead of going and putting all that concrete pipe down there, this cost me. I stayed in that plant, almost dying trying to get all of them, all of them pipes down through there. Now, if I would stop, if I would put something out there to stop the channel of water, that whole, that whole upper end of Springfield, Green Pastor be wiped out by flood. Other word, by me buying a pipe, they put pipes all the way down to grain that water to come to my area. And when I got the pipe, they built a big old concrete where, tried to put a concrete, they did broke concrete from areas mortared around to make a manhole for all that stick coming to it. It went at an angle, then go back out, the channel out. When they first done it, it had a cap on it for manhole. This manhole,
Mr. Mosley, I'm going to interrupt you right here. Okay, we're, we're, we're really talking about the rezoning of the properties. And I know you're into talking about your drainage and your, and your pipes and things. And so let's just end this, you know, we know that you said you are against the rezoning.
One more comment. When they got to, I had, I leveled the yard off, reason I'm against this. Time they got to with it. I was sitting out there reading, I went to sleep. People just kept walking by me, this is my yard, they walking across the yard. And then they, one sign that came from church, they had to start a football. Because my yard that big, they started playing football. Then later on, we started having burglaries over there from the shopping center area. Cop, before I put the fence up there, cop running out through my yard. Hey, what going on? He said, everything okay, sir, we chasing this guy. I said, doing what? He said, I'm chasing that guy, he burglarized his store over here. I said, man, I said, glad you said something,否则 they would have shot down through there. But what I'm telling you, the crime rate is high over there. Right now, where I live at, these people come from the outside. Once they turn this corner, and I'm on the corner, they throw the trash out. And I'm calling police. My house is burglarized, broke in, and all kind of stuff like that. I can't even get them to come over and patrol there. Now, what would it be if they put this thing over there? They so close, they be close to Megan Boulevard, then P-Bahn cut off. Once they hit that, they gone. I called them about one thing, it took them
Mr. Mosley, you're going into another. I, I, I'm not trying to be rude. But you're going into another, you've given us about three or four different scenarios. So I'm going to thank you for speaking in opposition. And it's time for us to move on.
I'm against it.
Okay.
Hello. My name is Kevin Hutchinson. And as I was listening to him talk this morning about this rezoning, and one man hit it right on the head. It's called separate reason. It's a elder community. And when you cannot walk, get where you cannot walk, this, this R2 would bring in new peoples. And you have a whole lot of more traffic, younger folks. Because we, like I said, we are elderly over there. And so, anytime you can't walk the street, walk down the sidewalk, walk to the post office, without worrying about what's going to happen to you. So, now, we have already, we faced with the industrial park behind us with all the noise and all this kind of stuff. So now, if zoning this to R2, that's going to create another problem for us. It's a quiet community. We like to keep it quiet. So, if by chance, I'm asking the council member to vote no. Thank you.
Is there anyone that's in favor?
My name is Kevin Ferguson. I'm here representing KDAF and company, which is my son Kevin Ferguson II. We've been in the rental business over 30 some years. And we, we have a track record of buying distressed property and increasing their value. But we kind of in a unique situation. And we're so glad so many people come out. Because those are the type of communities that we want to buy in. We want to buy in communities that people are concerned, that they care about. Because we come in and we create value. I, I think Brian Hawes, they, they, I see trucks running every day that houses that they're tearing down. Every day because of distressed property. And we saw a need 30 years ago to go in and buy distressed property and bring them up to code, increase the value. And it's just a win-win for the whole community. Tax, on the textbooks, taxes go up, the school get more money. The value of homes go up because you, you're creating value for the other homes. And we, we're not trying to do anything to, on our application, we said we would not build any new structure. And if we attempt to build some new structures, it would be so many hurdles that we would have to go through. That they would have the same opportunity to come back again. So if you have any questions, you know, I'd be willing to answer them. But that's basic, we not, we, we want the heritage to stay. We've been in it, like I say, over 30 years. And we've been community friendly. We, we manage and maintain. And we try to be community friendly.
Ms. Cody, would you come forward, please? Ms. Cody, would you give us the multi-family? First of all, a multi-family does not just only include apartment buildings, right?
That's correct. Multi-family can be a duplex or single family.
Okay. The three houses that there, which is involved in the zoning, could you give me the acreage of those, of that property?
This parcel is actually less than an acre, an acre. It is .76.
Okay, according to the maps I have, it's like 140. Three houses is on 140-foot front to 190-foot going back. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. To build an apartment complex, what would have to be the acreage?
An apartment complex is considered a planned unit development, which means two or more structures. It requires a minimum of two acres.
So even if I wanted to build an apartment on that parcel, would I be able to?
A single apartment building would be allowed. But there are a lot of obstacles just with a single apartment building. Because yeah. For a single apartment building, the maximum structure coverage of the lot is only 33%, which is about 11,000 and some change square feet. When you talk about apartments, you have a minimum size of the lot requirement per unit. So if you wanted to build an apartment with just one unit, you're required to have 8,000 square feet of property. For two units, it would be 9,500. For three units, it would be 11,000. Because it increases in 1,500 increments for each unit. So essentially, under the R2, what he could do, or not necessarily he, later on, a single apartment building with three units would be the most that could be constructed without a variance through the Board of Adjustment or some other type of approval.
10 years from now, if they sold the property and somebody wanted to build an apartment complex on it, what would be the procedure?
Well, an apartment complex wouldn't be, wouldn't be doable because they don't have the two acres. It would be the single structure. And they would be limited, without any type of approval, they would be limited to the three units. Anything other than that would require planning commission approval, Board of Adjustment approval. Something to keep in mind also is you're required to have off-street parking for an apartment unit. Two spaces for every dwelling unit. So there's a lot of obstacles to even a single apartment building.
Okay, thank you. Attorney.
Yeah, I just wanted to clear up some things, okay, that were said today. I love it when y'all come out and participate. It shows that you really like your community, you're wedged in community. And that's, that's what this city needs. Needs more people, more residents like y'all. What happens is, this is a unique piece of property. There were three homes put on this piece of property before the city passed its zoning ordinance. And under our current zoning ordinance, those three houses on this piece of property would not be allowed. But they, but since they existed prior to our zoning ordinance, they are considered grandfathered in. Or non-conforming use. When Mr. Ferguson purchases property, he went to the bank to borrow money to renovate these three houses. And that's, you know, put air conditioning, paint them, put a roof on, fix them up, make them look better. And the appraiser for the bank said, well, we have a problem with zoning. In order for us to protect our investment, you know, the bank, when you borrow money, they're going to put a, a mortgage on the property. Is this needs to be an R2 zoning. So that's what started this process. Now, I personally spoke to the bank and tried to say, well, if we give you a letter from the city indicating this is a non-conforming use and that it's, it's okay, as long as he doesn't expand that use, would, would that work? And their attorney said yes, but their appraiser and loan officer said no. Our regulations require that, that the zoning match, you know, if it'd be current zoning, it'd be R2. So at that point, I then met with Ms. Cody, who she spoke with at, at the request of Councilwoman Tows. Said, well, if there is an R2, what could be done in the future? I mean, as far as, as Mr. Ferguson goes, he's not going to put it, he's not going to go in and bear the expense of tearing down three houses, which I think, in our experience, usually runs about $3,500 to $5,500 each. You know. But if a future property owner buys this property, what could they do? And so that's when we looked at this and looked at the size of the property. And there could be no apartment complex put on there. The, the, the only thing that could be put on there is if you'd have to tear down those three houses. And then in the middle, you'd put one structure that might have three apartments in it. And that would be probably the most. But at that point, it would still have to come before the planning commission and, 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 and the Board of Adjustment. Because there would have to be variances and other things put in place, which everybody in the community would get notice of and have a chance to speak and remind these individuals of what the agreement was. Now, individual, also- Now, an individual also said, "Why can't we plat it?" We looked at that. The way these houses are designed, this lot, you cannot plat it and meet our current zoning. So that is not an option. We did look at that. Someone said, "Why rezone?" I think I just answered that because the bank is requiring that in order to protect their investment. And we've, and I've tried to look at that and said, "Well, what can I do to satisfy the bank without having to rezone?" And I went, you know, I'm not representing Mr. Ferguson, obviously, but just to make things work, that's what I do. I try to, I try to look at a problem, see what a solution is and make it work. And the bank said that, you know, standing fast, they need a rezoning. An individual said that he saw Matt with a big circle on it. The rezoning will only affect this property and this property only. The circle that the gentleman saw is a notification because when someone wants to, you know, rezone, we notify people in a certain radius of what's going on so they have an opportunity, like y'all have, to come and express any concerns that you have. So I just hope I cleared up some of the confusion.
I have one question. Lee, when you said, to make sure I've heard you correctly, you said if some future owner came in, they could only build one structure with three units of apartments?
That's probably the, I mean, I don't know how to phrase this, but if somebody had bought this, you know, say Mr. Ferguson rented these houses out and sold it to somebody and somebody else said, "Well, I would like to tear these three houses down and build something there." The most they could do, I mean, and I've sat down with Tina, Tina can correct because she's more the expert in this than I am, based on the square footage, based on how this lot lies, and based on you got to have parking and you'll have to have some variances too, is one building with like three units in it.
But then if they wanted to do more, they would have to jump through all the hoops?
Yes. And literally speaking, I don't know, I mean, even if they presented a good case, I don't know if those variants would be practical, to be honest with you.
But they wouldn't need anything just to do three? That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yes, they would.
Yes.
Oh, it would go through the process again and notifications and everybody would be done.
We'll be going back to the same room over and over again.
Mr. Mosley, you're out of order, please. And that was the, some people didn't know, that was the city attorney.
Lee Roberts.
Let's see, where are we? This ordinance has been presented today for first reading and the council will vote on it next week. Our next public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 1535 Litchfield Avenue in District 1, Gilbert Hardy, First Security Mortgage, Johnson and Associates Mortgage Company, Raturity Saving and Loan Association, Rosemary Waters and Jean Sims being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Yes, good morning, how are you?
Okay, if you give your name and address, please.
Yes, hi, I'm Patrice Hardy Calhoun. This is my father.
My name is Reverend Hardy. And she's gonna be my spokesman.
Okay. Now, good morning. Well, this is the first, this is sort of last minute for me and so I come in town to actually figure out what was going on with the property. My father purchased this property last year from a family friend and it was right after he had come out of the hospital from having a pacemaker. So Dad was making a decision to purchase this particular property. I don't know a whole lot about it, but I went past today and took pictures of it. From my understanding, he was wanting to fix it up and rent it out at some point. It is somewhat of an eyesore to me, you know, when I look at the property myself. It does need work. I spoke with my other siblings and they stated that they were willing to bring it up to code. I am not certain as to how much would need to be done in order to do so, but we are willing to do what needs to be done so that Dad can maintain this property. And so I guess what I'm asking is for clarity, if you all know at this particular point what needs to be done or if anything has been looked into, what exactly has been done at this point?
I think Mr. Harberson is here, but let me ask, Mr. Hardy, have you all been working on the house?
Yes.
Okay, I know I talked to your son that said that you all were doing something, but Mr. Harberson can give a better insight.
Okay, and who is Mr. Harberson?
This is Mr. Harberson here.
What's your role? What is this role?
He is the building director. He's responsible for it.
Okay, I'll listen and then come back.
Madam President, we filed this case in August of 2019. Actually, there was a case filed a year earlier, but with this current owner, we started working the case in August of 2019. We can see very little improvements. There was a building permit taken out that we would still honor, taken out in October of 2018. We're not opposed to the structure being brought up to code and I'd be glad to discuss with the owner what needs to be done following today's meeting. That's entirely up to the council. This is the first I've heard from the individuals. We came today prepared to ask for a resolution. I'm not opposed to the case being tabled for 30 days and give them my opportunity.
Mr. Hardy, could you all come back? Okay, did you all, you did say that you all are working on the house?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know, and I'm not saying completely done, but say, for instance, in the 30 days, do you think you'll have, not all of it done, but we have good, you know, where it can seem like that there's work being done on it?
Yes, we can, there's some work that can be done on it. It will be determined by what, of course, what we go over with him as to it being brought fully up to code, but we'll see what, to see if it's even feasible to go that route. So we'll need to find out exactly what's going on. I guess he'll give us the particulars as he stated and we'll move on from there. But you were about to say?
Yeah, one of the things that really been done during the COVID-19 is because it was so much junk in the house and it took a long time to get all of it out of, you know, working.
From the previous owner.
Yeah. And so, but we had to get all this stuff out of it first before we could find out what was wrong with it, you know, inside. And so we have done one side of it. And on the, going into the door, we had to do the floor joists on that side. We got those fixed. And on the other side, I don't know whether the floor joists, that's got to be tore out so we can find out if the floor joists are not. But we do have, we looked at the top of it and some of the shingles have blew, the wind blew some of the shingles off. And so my son was going to get up and put some shingles on that, you know. My son's a carpenter, you know, so that's the reason why.
Well, what I would do is I'll recommend to the council that we give you 30 days. And what we'll do is come back in 30 days and if there's, you know, improvements, then we'll just, we'll continue. But I recommend to the council that we give them 30 days.
Same.
Thank you.
Another discussion, can I just say?
Discussion.
The material right now is hard to get. So you may want to think about a little longer than 30 days because for wood and stuff, you can't really get it right now because of the COVID.
Okay, well, I was saying 30 days, maybe not that, but if you just continuously, because if there's no improvement, what we have, what we do have that come before the council is, people come and say that they're going to, we give them 30 days and they come and say that they're going to do it and then when they leave, zero is done. So what I'm saying is 30 days and whatever you all do within those 30 days to help improve the property, that will be, and if you get with Mr. Harberson, then we'll review it again in 30 days.
All right, and we do appreciate your consideration. And so just keep it in mind that, of course, and thank you for the, you know, even saying the 60 days, but just so that we can, you know, have an opportunity to spend some time over there and see what needs to be done. We appreciate you all.
Ma'am, it's my experience in being up here for a long, long time. Mr. Harberson looks at the outside first to make sure your outside is up to code. And I hate to speak for him, but I've always heard him say, if you do your outside first, where people can notice it, the work you're doing. We do inside, we can't notice the work you're doing. If you do all the outside work, that would probably help you first.
Okay, we will consider that as well.
But just get with Mr. Harberson later.
Is he, does he have to stay until after you all are finished with everything before he can sit with us?
By the time we get through with council, basically, he's on right now.
I see.
Yeah, so everything, yeah, everything's gonna come up now. He's here to do that.
Thank you.
You can see him afterwards.
All right, we appreciate that.
Madam President, we don't need to forget the vote on this one.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was about to. I made the recommendation.
We have a motion and a second to table the resolution for 30 days. If that's my, if that's correct, that's my understanding. Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 1301 Alabama Street in District 3, State of Alabama and Right of Redemption of Benjamin Martus Porter has been the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in July of 2019. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 305 Mistletoe Hollow Road in District 4, Michael James and Michelle L. Heard being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves trash and debris and abandoned vehicle. We've had multiple cases at this location over the last few years. This particular situation has improved in the last few days, but there are still some serious issues, specifically with a, with an in-ground swimming pool. I think some of the pictures that are presented today, you'll be able to see that. We're asking for a resolution so we can go on the property and abate this nuisance. Thank you.
Mr. Harberson, what, we gotta do? Go in and fill that pool in with dirt or?
Well, that would be our only option. We would give the owner a reasonable amount of time once a resolution is passed to take care of themselves. If they wish to keep the pool, obviously, it's gonna have to be made compliant. If they can't do that, they would need to fill it in or we would do that for them.
Have you talked to Mr. Hayden, that that guy's about?
Yes, he understands, yes.
This is where we need the pictures, where we can put these pictures up so people can see. We don't want to just knock people's houses down and we don't just want to go on people's property because if you all could see it, then you could understand it better. One day, we could no City Hall, we may have that system.
Madam President, I move to adopt.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property at 1909 Jefferson Street in District 5, Dean Shaw and Teresa Shaw being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there one, anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves remains from a mobile home that has been demolished. We filed the case in November of last year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve. And we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Madam President, I move to adopt.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property at 408 Bryan Street in District 6, Krista Brown being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in June of 2019. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve. And we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property at 1318 Acton Street in District 7, the estate of Thomas Clemmons and Lois Clemmons, potential heirs being Connie Ashley, Deborah Horn, Kermit L. Ashley and Connie E. Ashley being the last known owners.
If y'all will look, I will comment for Mr. Reed on this one. I have to go by it all the time. The hole back there that was the house added on to it, the back part just caved completely in. just caved completely in. So he kind of beat me on that one today.
When you look at it, you've got a carport out front, a house where it's caving in, in the back of it, you've got a two or three-story building that's caving in, it's presenting a safety hazard around the neighborhood. So that's what that amounts to.
What is the pleasure of the council?
We didn't hear.
Move to abate.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Got it.
You don't even have to say that though.
Turned off the gun there.
Is there anyone in favor?
Hey, it was dangerous just taking pictures of this one, okay, so please allow me to share those with you.
Mr. Harbison, I think this might be a pretty good rehab house.
We, we filed this case in August of last year, there have been no improvements, so there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Abolish.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution authorizing a special use permit for AT&amp;T to construct a new wireless telecommunications facility located at nine two two East Megan Boulevard, and this is for a one hundred monopole tower and a six by, sixty by sixty lease area. Is there anyone to speak in, uh, opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speak in favor?
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, David Andrews with the Center for Municipal Solutions. I'm the city's consultant for wireless telecommunications. Uh, this application was made by AT&amp;T, uh, to construct a one hundred, eh, one hundred-foot monopole tower. AT&amp;T will be the, uh, anchor carrier on this tower, and this will be to remedy, uh, capacity issue that AT&amp;T has in the immediate area surrounding the tower. Uh, Center for Municipal Solutions has reviewed the application and recommends approval by the council.
Is this the length of the, uh, height of what a pole should, should be? Do we have ordinance for anything different?
Yeah, they modified it from a hundred and fifty feet to a hundred feet.
Oh, okay, that's, that's where, okay.
The, the original application that was made by AT&amp;T was for a hundred and fifty-foot tower. Uh, after review with CMS and CMS working with AT&amp;T, they reduced the tower height to comply with the city's ordinance. Uh, the tower, the, the application actually complies with the city's ordinance and all other aspects as well.
How close is that? Is that near, uh, the, uh, Goodyear plant?
Uh, it's gonna be between the Walmart and the Goodyear plant. It'll be closer to the Walmart up on East Megan. It's gonna be just east, northeast of the Walmart. In that grown-up area that you see, uh, to the east northeast, there's an area that's, that's kind of grown up between there and the Goodyear, uh, property.
It sits off behind Ulta and Ross, that shop, it's, uh.
Okay, oh.
It sits off back.
Okay, okay. Any questions from any of the council members?
Yes, love.
Okay.
Good morning, my name's Andy Rottenstrike, I'm here on behalf of AT&amp;T. Just wanted to be here in case you guys had any questions I can answer, but, uh, I think David answered yours, so Ms. Tolls, if there's anything else, I'll be happy to try and answer.
Last week, you had mentioned how this could possibly help with, uh, communications and also with students that are remote learning. You, can, can you share any of that?
Sure. Uh, so this tower is needed in order to relieve capacity on some of our existing sites. So when you have overcapacity, you have people using their cell phones, their iPads, their laptops, it can overload the network. We need more sites to relieve those towers, therefore you don't have dropped calls, nine-one-one calls get through, uh, FirstNet sites for emergency responders can get through, and folks working from home and schooling from home will have better connectivity. That's what we're intending to do with this site in this neighborhood.
Any, any questions?
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing agreement with Greater Gaston Housing Authority, and this continues the community-oriented policing program in the public housing community. For the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, the city will be reimbursed for the hourly rates of the officers. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Show move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is authorizing consent letter with Cable One and Company, and this authorizes consent of the assignment of an agreement with Cable One and Company, authorizing, authorized by ordinance O twelve dash eighteen on May first, twenty eighteen, to Hair Gray of Alabama Incorporated, for the provision of broadband service. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Show move.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any new business?
Uh, yes, Madam President, I'm sorry, I was still reading the last resolution. Um, I have a, a resolution from, um, the Transportation Department authorizing an amendment to the memorandum of agreement with J.R. Wilburn and Associates. Essentially, the, the amendment is extending the time they have to provide services to the, um, EDOI PO concerning some long-term paving projects. Um, and they're, this just extends the term of their agreement, um, to account for some delays that were a result of COVID nineteen. So I make a, a motion to consider this as new business.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Department reports, um, committee reports, Mr. Williamson, uh, at the request of my colleague to the right.
Staying gentleman.
Uh, he was wanting, I think there's a project on Penny Street, is there, um?
An update, please give update.
I, I told him that, uh, I didn't like throwing you under the bus.
Well, I'm getting so many complaints on it, I want the people to hear from you.
I understand.
And the Water Department.
Yeah, I don't mind being thrown under the bus, as long as you don't leave me there bleeding in the street, it'd be all right. Unfortunately, I don't have a major update. As you know, uh, the Water Works has completed their water project. I do know, I, I'll tell you as much as I do know, uh, the last portion of that is a sewer rehabilitation. Uh, they did determine when we were almost ready to, uh, move our paving crew in to redo that street as a result of, of it already needing to be paved, but certainly after the, the water line was done. Uh, I say that to say thankfully, they noticed, uh, that the sewer needed to be redone, but that has pushed it back. So that work order has officially been put in. Uh, when I spoke with them, I guess it was earlier this week, they were gonna request that that be the first or one of the first that are done. Uh, not trying to give an excuse for the contractor, I was told they also had some COVID issues with their crews. Uh, I think that is affecting everybody a- across the board, but to say that, I don't know their exact date of moving in, but as soon as they do, there's nothing else holding up our paving. So that's not really what you want to know or hear, because I can't give you a timeframe, except to say all the pieces of the puzzle are in place to finally get it done. So we're, we're literally waiting on their sewer contractor.
Thank you, thank you so much. And to the people on Penny Street, I just want to say, I know you've been patient, but be patient a little bit longer. Uh, just be patient a little bit longer, please, uh, and they will get to it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Comments, uh, announcements, we'll, we'll start with, uh, Councilman Wilson.
I just want to say thank you to all the members of the H R A C that met earlier this morning. I think it was a productive meeting, and I look forward to, uh, um, to working with all of you guys moving forward. I think it'll be a great one. And I also want to say thank you to the mayor and to the Finance Department and the Engineering Department for finally, um, uh, finding a way to lock in the budget funds, and I know it's not easy in a year like this where we have so many financial challenges, uh, but we were able to lock in the money, uh, necessary to finish the, the repaving of South Eleventh Street, um, which will include some additions and some, uh, some new sidewalk spaces, I believe. So, um, thank you guys for being diligent, working with that. That's something that District Five desperately needs. That corridor from seven fifty-nine up into downtown has really done a number on South Eleventh Street with so much traffic, and this will be a wonderful addition to our community. It's also my understanding that a portion of this budget will be allocated to build a new, um, fire hall at the, in the Banks Park area. Um, thank you to everybody involved for that, that is greatly appreciated. And even though that lies right on the boundary of myself and, uh, Councilman Cannon's district, I'm gonna take full credit, that fire department's in District Five, no matter what you say. Anyway, that's all I have, Madam President.
Councilman Beck.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing, Council. I do want to recognize our illustrious former police chief, uh, Mr. Crane in the audience. Thank you for being here. Could you not? It was like they're hammering Jerry Garcia.
I would have bet Jerry Garcia.
It is good to see Chief Crane, good to see you. Uh, want to announce that tomorrow we will have, uh, food pantry distribution at First Baptist Church, Gadsden, that's at the corner of Fifth Street and Walnut Street. Unfortunately, it'll probably be the last distribution we'll have for, uh, a while. Uh, we have, in the past four months, have distributed, uh, food to over two thousand households, and, uh, and it's been a real honor and pleasure to get to know a lot of the same people every week, and, uh, we feel like we, we have extended family at our, at our church now, and, uh, we've heard some great stories from those fine folks, and we're, have been very glad to help them. We'll pivot back to our, uh, four or five-year commitment to Striplin Elementary, where we've been providing a backpack program along with, uh, Alabama Teachers Credit Union and, uh, the Exchange Bank and Johnson Giant Foods as a collaborative effort, a neighborhood effort to feed about a hundred and twenty-five students at Striplin, uh, that take home backpack food. Uh, so with school resuming, uh, in-person school, we'll be focusing on that. Uh, I want to commend the mayor and Frankie and, uh, also Chet and his crew at Twin Bridges. I was, uh, I played golf in the Gadsden Junior Golf Association fundraiser Saturday, and y'all, we have a great golf course. The city of Gadsden has done a tremendous job in, uh, replacing the greens out there. They are in excellent condition. Uh, Chet shared with me that he thinks this September will be the best September that we've ever had since the course opened in two thousand twelve, and that's the total number of rounds played. So great things are happening at Twin Bridges. Uh, it's good news for our, uh, not only Gadsden, but the surrounding area. We have a lot of people come from out of county that, that play our, our golf course. So, uh, that's, I think, a wise investment and, and a very sound investment in our community and in our, uh, facility out there. So thank you very much. And I want to, I want to say to the folks in Green Pastures, thank you for coming. I echo our city attorney, Lee Roberts, uh, it's good to see democracy in action. This is what having a city and having a, a former government's all about. Uh, as you got a little bit of a glimpse today, every Tuesday, of course, during COVID, we, it's been a little short, but every Tuesday, we condemn property because people don't take care of their property. Uh, forty-two percent of the housing stock in Gadsden is rental houses. So we're, and, and we're in desperate need of, uh, housing, and so we look for investors to come to Gadsden and to invest into our, into our neighborhoods. Um, I can understand your concern, and I think what I heard today, that those concerns hopefully won't come to fruition because of those, the size of the lot. It's less than one acre, point seven six or point seven nine. I think it's gonna be very hard to ever make it what you are concerned that it could become. I think what's gonna happen is, is that what we hope happens, uh, all over the city is that a, a company comes in, they refurbish a house and invest money into those houses and make it to where it's an attractive home or homes for your neighborhood. Uh, Mr. Ferguson, I, I trust that's your goal, that seems to have been your thirty-year goal since you've been, been, been doing this. I don't think you have a history of, of putting money into a house and then selling it, and then something else goes there. So I, I hear your concerns and, and I feel for your concerns. I, I won't say they're unfounded, I, I think you have a right just to come and say what you're saying, but I think it will prove in the years to come that it, it will be a sound investment and will upgrade your community and increase your property values, and then we won't have to go and, and tear a house down. I'm assuming if there's not an investment made, those houses one day will appear on Mr. Harbison's list and we'll have to, we'll have to tear them down, and then, and that's a long process, and during that time, it looks terrible. Uh, just right around our neighborhoods, we, we have some real challenges. So, uh, I just, you know, thank you for coming, thank you for participating in, in, in local government. That's all I have, Madam President.
Okay, Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, again, I, I want to echo what's been said about the citizens of, uh, of, uh, the Green Pastor community. I mean, I, I know some, some very good people. Um, a dear friend of mine, uh, is a part of the Hughley and Hope family, uh, who, uh, is, uh, who obviously have, uh, who are staples in that, in that community. Um, but before you walk away and draw a final conclusion about this, that particular vote, please understand a couple of things. I think if you get to know the owner, uh, he's somebody that that community would be very proud of. Uh, he's somebody that you, you know, that, that you, that you would be proud of and somebody that, that I think you can trust. Um, the, the second thing is, um, eh, you know, I, I hope our city attorney and our, um, and the zoning department has, has helped to dispel some of the, um, the misinformation that may be out there in terms of that, that particular lot. Uh, the, the concern about rezoning and, 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 and bigger things happening when you go from residential to commercial is always valid. I mean, so don't, you know, again, you being here says a lot about your attention to your community, and that's a good thing, but just please, please understand that there, this particular lot is very restricted in terms of what it can become. Um, and, uh, and I think what the city attorney was trying to convey earlier is that there's very little else that can be done other than what's being done with it. I mean, some of the discussion that we had about this property wa- was around just what it would take to add a garage to one of those houses. I mean, it would be almost impossible to, just to add a garage to one of them. So it's, I, I think the fears around that becoming something huge i- are just not, they're, they're, they're not really, um, uh, based on anything substantive. Um, uh, but, uh, but again, I never want to discount people and, and their, what, what their community means to them. And again, I think it says a lot for the, uh, citizens of, uh, of, of Green Pastures to come out. But again, what, what was shared today was not designed to dismiss your concerns, it was more to present information, and, uh, I would encourage you, I think he'd be open to it, please talk to the property owner. I think he can give you some assurances that, uh, that, that may help, okay? Um, the other, the other thing is, uh, I, I'd like to echo Council, Council, uh, Member Wilson's, uh, sentiment about today's, uh, committee meeting. It was the initial meeting, um, and, uh, I think it went well, we had good turnout, uh, and, uh, and we'll, we'll continue to move forward. I think, uh, a lot of good, uh, good information was exchanged, and, uh, and I'm excited because we've got a good, even-handed committee, I think, who's gonna offer up some good recommendations to the city. Um, glad to have Councilman Cannon back. Uh, know he was, uh, he's been out for, for at least a couple of weeks, and, uh, and it was probably tough for him to get here today, but we're glad to have him back for sure. Appreciate it, and hope he continues to fight through, uh, those, those personal illnesses. And, uh, the last thing I have, well, well, congratulations to the Gadsden City Titans on a really big win this weekend. I mean, a really big win. Uh, it's largely believed, uh, you know, I know, I know Coach Smith can't buy into this, but it's largely believed that, uh, spots one, two, and three are sold up in that region as far as the playoffs, and that they're, they're scratching for spot four. Well, they took a step in the right direction for whatever spot they want, because spot they want, because that was a big win, and Dr. Toles' nephew, right? Yeah, rushed for, what, 170, 70 yards, 75 yards? Yeah, he might still be running. But as I said before, it's always fun to watch a big man with sweet feet. I mean, so he was, he looked good. He's a young man, and we've got at least a couple more years to watch him. The only other thing, as I always end all of my comments with, is I do want to encourage us to continue to fight injustice wherever it exists, society against both racist behavior and racist symbols. Thank you, Madam President.
Mayor.
I just want to congratulate Lisa Rosser and the Finance Department, Frankie and some of the folks in my office for the way we got through all of this past financial, I guess you'd say, storm. I don't know what you'd call it. But anyway, they did an excellent job and got the budget, the council all on board, passed it today, and I want to thank everybody, and I want to thank Dr. Toles for always being the voice of reason.
Councilman Worthy.
Madam President, I will just say, Mayor, I don't think it's fair to thank Lisa, because she got to do what she's good at, and let's say no. So I don't think it's fair to thank her.
That's why I call her Doctor No, but that's why we got money.
Councilman Worthy.
Yes.
You already had yours when you did.
Well, no. I want to brag on a young man that's in my district, goes to Gadsden City High School, a little young man by the name of A.J. Tinker. He saw a need in our community, and he's meeting it. He started a 100-black boys' club, and they're going to paint the wall at, on Tuscaloosa Avenue at 8th and Tuscaloosa, right there at Head Start. They're going to paint it this Saturday, so if anybody want to come out and help, September 26 at 9:00 a.m. So, and I want to say, really proud of him. I think he's about 14 years old, 14 or 15 maybe, and I'm just really thrilled that, you know, he's not sitting around complaining and talking about, well, why somebody else won't do this or didn't do this. He saw the need, and he's meeting the need. I love that, man. If we had more people like him, not only in District 3, but in this city, in this state, in this country, in this world, I think we'll be doing much better than what we're doing now. And now, I want to go and talk about the census. I was looking at the news last night, and the state of Alabama is last in all 50 states in completing a census. So please, people, complete the census, because if we don't, we're going to lose a representative, we're going to lose one of the seats, and you know who that representative will be, the last one that they hired. So sue, so we need to please fill out your census, and then we're going to lose millions of dollars coming into the state of Alabama, because for each person that fills their census out, that's $1,600 a year. Then you multiply that over 10 years, because we only do a census every 10 years. I don't know, I was thinking that for a minute. Maybe a lot of people have moved out of Gadsden, and that's why we are right at 60%. And at this time, 10 years ago, we was at 66%. But since I've watched the news, and it's all over the state, so people are just not filling it out. So we're going to continue to ask you to fill the census out. You can even call the phone number. You won't have to do anything but just talk, and they'll do it for you. So thank you, Madam President. That's all I have.
Councilman Cannon.
Thank you, Madam President. In 19, I was sitting there trying to think, in 1976, before Catson Wilson was ever born, probably, I was at the Walnut Park Fire Station. I was friends with some firemen over there, Tom Freeman and those guys, and they'd invite me to come over there and play basketball. I had a little basketball go up there. Everybody go over there and play. The station was fairly new then, but it's at least, I know, 50 years old, and I don't think I see you spend hardly any money on it. It's actually in a bad location for the fire trucks to get out. When we move it to Banks Park, we will probably have better response time, because they'll be able to get in and out quicker there. And Councilman Wilson, you can take all the credit for it. As long as we get it over there, you can have all the credit done.
I don't want credit for getting it there. I just say, I don't claim that it's in District 5 and not District 6, since it's right there on the line.
Everybody knows where it's at, so it's going to be. So, you know, we'll leave it at that for today. I do want to thank everybody for all the callers and prayers. For me, I have been out the last three weeks. I have been really sick, but I really appreciate all those. You know what it means to, you know, people's praying for me. The hospital's a scary place to be right now. You can have no visitors, and, you know, it's just, it's just a lonesome place. If you know anybody that's over there, you need just, make sure you try to pray for them every night, because they really need it. I'm going to turn to something now that I've really missed talking about. It's Gina Flemings-Morris. She wants to be the mayor's assistant, and she tries really hard. I gave some stuff the other day about her qualifications, but I left out two. She claims, I've never seen the lady. She claims that she's a short lady. If she come to City Hall, she would have to wear high heels to get up here to make her taller. Well, I want to tell her when she comes, she will have to get on a chair, because Councilman Reed's about seven foot tall. If she wants to talk to him, she'll have to get on a chair to talk to him. And she also talks about being a wrestler. Some woman from Texas wanted to come and wrestle over the Emerson Monument. Well, she told her she could come every day but Wednesdays. On Wednesdays, she had something else to do. But I have got an idea of how we might can get that phone number out of Councilman Wilson's hat. I was watching a water boy while I've been out, and at the end there, when the water boy gets married to that little girl, his mother tackles his stepfather on the ground, and that would be an idea of how she could get Councilman Wilson's phone number to the mayor. She says a few things that I'm not in favor of. One of them, she said, she wanted to kind of shape up the city council. Well, I'm, I hope she don't want to come up here and make us run or stuff like that or do exercise, because I ain't not in for that. And then she talks about little Debbie cakes, and I surely don't want her to take my Debbie cakes away from me. So I wish you all the luck, Gina, being an assistant to the mayor. You got it, Ben.
I am not going to expound on that. All I know is she's the mayor, wants to be the mayor, and honest to goodness, she likes rabbits and squirrels, and maybe one of these days, she may be the mayor. I don't know.
Now, she don't want to be the mayor. She wants to be the assistant to the mayor, and Sherman won't call her, because you don't have her phone number.
Councilman Reed.
As it told, I am sitting in the most unique place in the whole council. I commend each and everybody for saying everything that I was going to say. By the time it gets back to me, there's nothing to say. So I only want to be one asinine thing today, and I very rarely ever do an asinine thing. The state of Alabama paved all of Knockaloo Road from Megan Boulevard all the way over to Reece City, and in the gas company's infinite wisdom, they came up at the corner of Matrix Tree and cut out about a 4x4, which was really nice that they got it repaired. The problem is, when they put the packing back in, they put it two inches above pavement, so you drive smoothly all the way up it, two miles, and then you hit that dad blame curb, and you think the whole bottom of your car is coming out. That's my asinine statement, of which I will request the gas company pound that thing down or mill it down. Thank you so much.
I know we're not supposed to mention names, but I know he's listening. Curly DeRamos. And so what you did, Councilman Reed, you cleared up some information, because he called me fussing about the city. They paved Knockaloo Road, but they don't pay the others, and I told him that that was the state of Alabama that paid it. So you just confirmed what I'd like to say. And also, my last one is, nobody up here is going to say it out, so I'm going to say it. I'm glad we voted for the budget unanimously.
Don't be looking at me, because I'm still mad. I want my lights fixed, though.
Everybody up here knows what I'm talking about, that we all seven voted for the budget.
Yeah, best dog holler. Well, she looked right at me. You know, I don't mind voting on.
I call for a motion to adjourn.
Please, please.